Do we have an over/under on this evening? Anyone thinking midnight? Is it before midnight or after?
What's that?
I think Jeremy will have to reset the HVAC system in life if it turns off at 10.
That's, that's-
And please note, I referred to a betting term.
I said, want to bet that my battery will last. And I thought, I'm not even going to risk it.
There you go.
I'll just create a trip hazard, so. Everybody ready? Submission of Big Walnut local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. And I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, would you mind doing the honors?
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Here.
Mr. Fuji?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
We don't have an internal sound system. The microphones are for the stream. Thank you. Alrighty. Item 6-1, it's recommended a board approve July 15th, 2021, regularly scheduled board meeting minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. Any comments or feedback on the minutes?
Did you fix that, Jeremy? I didn't look.
I believe that was on the, the 20th.
That's the second one, okay, sorry.
So Jeremy, when you're ready?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Upstain.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. It's recommended a board approve the minutes from the July 2020, 2021 special board meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Doug, you had the one notation to Jeremy?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Crowell noted that some of the approval boxes were not there, so I did update that.
Okay. Should be good to go. Anything else on the 20th?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsh?
Yes.
I apologize, Mrs. Dorsh and Mr. Schneider.
Yes. Alright, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We'll start this evening with academics and we'll be hearing from our new directors of academic achievement. I believe we have, actually Kate's going to go first tonight, Ms. Kate Toma, and then Mrs. Annie Clark.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Wanted to start out by telling you some of the things that Annie and I have been working on in the short time that we've been in our roles. We got started right away with the administrative retreat that was held on July 29th and 30th. During this time, we were able to focus on some instructional things in addition to making sure that we were ready to open safely for students. But it was nice to get back to talking about instruction and what we needed to do to continue our district's vision and mission around academics. We were able to do activities like a gallery walk, some calibration activities around the Eagle profile, which we'll be rolling out this year with all of our principals and staff and our community members. If you remember, the Eagle profile was worked on by a community group around characteristics that were excited to have our students work on in order to be ready to enroll, enlist, or be employed. So we were excited about that work. We also worked with our principals on their continuous improvement plans, getting ready for another great year in our schools with academics. After that, we began working on new staff orientation, which was just a week later. It's hard to believe we've packed a lot of stuff in in just a couple of weeks. For new staff orientation, we had over 30 new staff there, and boy, were they excited. I think just like we get excited for that first day of school with our students, to have that many people join us in Big Walnut and be so pumped to learn about our academic vision. We did the bus tour again, so new staff got to go around to all of our buildings and check them out and meet the principals. And if staff were in the building, they were there to welcome them. I think one of the quotes that was, you know, very powerful, the high school at the end has the cheerleaders and band out in front of the high school and welcomes the new staff as they walk into the high school. And there's not, I mean, people were crying, they were so excited to be a Big Walnut Eagle, and it just kind of renews that spirit of what a strong community we have. After that, we have just been tackling our academics piece, so I'm going to let Annie do that next.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I just want to echo what Kate said. We had a great opening new staff orientation admin retreat along with convocation. So it was, it's been a lot, but very exciting. So our first thing that we are starting to work on is we're reviewing our current health and wellness standards and the instruction in Big Walnut, especially as it pertains to puberty education and sex ed. We have been gathering our current curriculum that we are using, sorry, and the current legislations that, as it relates to these topics. Our work plan for this topic, for these topics includes completing the review of what we're currently using in the classrooms and sharing an updated curriculum information to our academic advisory council. That council is made up of teachers, administrators, board members, as well as community members. With that in mind, the concept is reviewing the current standards, legislation, and then talking about the concept of using Big Walnut staff to deliver all curriculum around puberty education and staff. I'm sorry, puberty education and sex ed. To review a few items, just so everyone's on the same page, that came up at some recent board meetings, and to clarify some misunderstandings that currently exist in the community. Centero has never been used to teach sex ed to our students in Big Walnut local schools. Relationships Under Construction, however, was brought to Big Walnut in 2015. At that point, everyone in our county was using Relationships Under Construction except for Big Walnut. This program was reviewed by the Academic Advisory Committee as it implemented during the spring of 7th grade. So just a reminder, the Academic Advisory Council decided to push these topics off. So the state of Ohio gives you a grade band to teach them. For example, they might say K through 6. These are the standards you need to teach. We have, as a committee, we've decided to push them off to the latest grade band. So for example, if it said K 6, we would then teach it in 6th grade. Currently, puberty education takes place in 5th and 6th grade. Sex education does not begin until 7th grade, and it continues to be addressed through 8th and 9th grade. We, as Kate mentioned, we just started in July, so we definitely are just starting to get our heads wrapped around this. Our timeline for the scope and sequence of this work is to complete our review and recommendations prior to the instruction in the spring of, the current 7th graders will get. So we're hoping to get a lot of this work done prior to that being taught. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions for them?
Annie? Yeah. You kind of went through a little quickly there. Can you say again, just the conversations that have been had at this point? Is that rather than using outside sources, that it would potentially be taught by Big Walnut staff members? Right, and so we're going to review, like, we're going to take all of what's currently being used, taking the legislation and taking the materials and kind of aligning, hopefully looking at the possibility of using Big Walnut staff to teach that. We just haven't, like Kate said, we've kind of just been tackling one obstacle at a time. This was something that was brought up last school year that, you know, we had talked about with the transition of the directors that once they got in place, that was something they were going to take a look at.
Ms. Clark, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation a month on the job.
Yeah.
This question might not necessarily be, I'm going to direct it at you, but it might really be a better question for Mrs. Hamburg. Can you also talk a bit to the composition of the academic advisory committee? Is that all internal educators who are making these types of decisions? Are there other stakeholders from this community that are part of that?
So currently, obviously last year with COVID, it wasn't, it didn't meet a whole lot. But yes, there's administrators, current administrators, there's current teachers and community members.
And community members?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So the curriculum is actually looked at not just from our staff, but also external people who wouldn't be as familiar with what, say, a state standard or a grade band is.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And we always make sure we have at least a representative from each of the school buildings, from the community.
Thank you.
Anything else for them? Thank you, ladies.
And welcome again.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our new director of student services, Mr. Roslin Sky, and he has brought with him Mr. Justin Plummer, who is one of our mental health professionals in the district. So they're going to share some information. There were some concerns brought up last board meeting about Centero, so we wanted to put together some information on what role Centero does play in our district, and so they're going to share that with you at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hamburg, and thank you, members of the Board of Education, for allowing us to speak tonight. Just wanted to bring up Mr. Justin Plummer. He is our district mental health specialist, very passionate about helping students with mental health and counseling. He has years as a teacher, as well as a counselor. I want him to kind of come up and just discuss what school-based mental health models look like, as well as specifically address Centero and how we've used Centero. I'll follow up with kind of funding and how we've gone through to secure Centero in the past, and then we'd be certainly open to any questions that you would have, so.
Thanks, Sheri. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to bring you this information tonight. We currently use Centero and Ohio Guidestone to provide our mental health services for the district. Centero we use for prevention services. It is a preventative, short-term opportunity for us to help students and provide them with both universal, selected and indicated, universal for all students, selected or for certain groups of students who are indicated that a student needs these services. And typically, we address stress, anxiety, depression, and life stressors are the kind of the main areas that they help us with as far as the mental health services throughout the district. Centero provides three counselors to us, three days a week, for a total of nine counseling day services. And the exposure for Big Walnut for the last year approximately was 144 students that Centero provided those services for. If a student does require services from Centero, or they need specialized mental health, they will review, the staff will review each student's needs, and if service is deemed appropriate, they'll look at the support options to offer to parents. Then parent and staff will meet or talk on the phone, and referrals will be made once parents agree that they would like those services for their children. The parents must consent to services before any services begin. And typically, there's four to six sessions. School teams review student support needs at the end of that four to six session timeframe, and if it's something more than a preventative service and it's something that will be more than long-term, we refer for outside services and recommend other options for parents. So in that, basically guaranteeing parents' choice and guaranteeing that we provide our students as much as we can to help with academics is kind of where we ask Centero to come in and help.
Justin, could you, before Ross and Scott, could you talk just for a moment about kind of, what is the current landscape looking like with mental health with our students, especially during the pandemic? I know we've had some conversations. If you could maybe share some of those insights with the board?
Currently, that basically the need based on the number of referrals and requests has basically doubled. It has been reflected, for example, looking in the community for referral sources and receiving mental health services. Everyone's full. The pandemic and stress, those kind of services are kind of at a premium, and we're really lucky to be able to have the opportunity to provide our students those services in a timely manner. Stress has affected everybody, and, you know, one of the things that to support that first goal of academics, we've really kind of prioritized what we do for our students, and Centero's helped us do that.
Alright, so as far as costs, bottom dollar figure for Big Walnut, we pay nothing for Centero. Centero is provided to the district through Delaware Morrow County Health, Mental Health and Recovery Board. There's a grant that goes through that county board grant to provide preventative counseling services to schools. So that Morrow, that mental health board essentially assigns and selects a provider. They have selected Centero. All four districts in Delaware County, as well as all four districts in Morrow County, all use Centero through that grant funding, which is provided, again, at no cost to us or any of the other school districts. Looking at that, if we were to kind of supplant that and replace that in-house by hiring and filling those nine days worth of counseling services, it would cost us approximately $133,000 in salaries alone, plus the benefits for those nine days worth of counseling services, so. A substantial amount, certainly, so. Are there any specific questions any board members have?
I don't have a particular question, just more of a comment. So I actually have a couple of children that have ended up kind of in that program. And I've got one that's had some bigger challenges that required kind of some outside help. And I can tell you firsthand from my experience that, one, having a resource that's closely connected with our district to help out with some of those anxiety issues that was working closely with our teacher and our mental health staff was invaluable in helping. In one particular case, in the fact that they were all on the same page, as I've experienced with other experiences when you get outside of the school district and you're working with groups that aren't connected, getting that to sync up is a little bit more difficult. And then I just would personally comment to the access aspect of things. And without getting too specific, I can attest to the challenges of trying to get good mental health services outside of the school arrangement that Centero helps provide, as well as Ohio Guidestone, that has access that we have available. Because trying to do it through private providers and things like that, it's been my experience that they are slammed. And trying to get to services in a timely fashion is a challenge. And so I just, as one board member, I appreciate those efforts. And I wanted to thank you and your staff for what you've done for our family, but as well as the families in the district.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Sheri.
I just have a comment based on the fact that I talked to a local psychologist yesterday and kind of discussed with her about that we have about 140 students that would be using this service and if we were to look outside of the district. And she said, I can't imagine, in this climate we're in right now, placing 140 adults and finding services for them, let alone finding services for 140 children. She said, it is next to impossible to find the kind of counselors that you need when dealing with children and adolescents and their issues. And that's coming from somebody who's in the profession. And just, I think that kind of really hit home with me that when she talks about just the demand for services that are there in our community today. So I appreciate that information. I guess I just wanted to have you stress again, parents are involved in all of this.
100%. Yep, parents have to give written consent.
And are partners with Centero and the council.
They have to give written consent before a Centero counselor or a counselor from Ohio Guidestone would work with their student.
And Centero does not provide sex education within the Big Walnut school district.
Correct.
So I'll just give you my personal experience as an example of how that works. So in the one particular instance with my child, we knew it was an issue. We discussed it during parent-teacher conferences. We were all trying to do things, parent, staff, ourselves, to try to make things and improve them. We didn't necessarily see the improvement. We went back to the teacher, talked about the challenges we were having. At that point, the teacher had recommended that this could be an option for us, sent us an email with that information about the person, the program, and what it would look like. And then it was up to us to reply to say, yeah, we wanted to have our son, in this particular case, involved with that. Then what happened from there is I actually had contact with that particular member of Centero who talked about what they were going to do and what they were doing in that group. So I knew what they were talking about and what that process was looking like before they even got into it. It was nice to know that upfront, but it was also really helpful to know so that I could reinforce the things that they were talking about at home, and it was invaluable to have them spend some of that time with me so that I could follow up and ask the right questions about the things that were being learned and being practiced and help them be able to do that. And then it was, just as they talked about, it was, I want to say, maybe three or four sessions where we saw some improvement and made some progress. And so I just throw that out there, that's one personal parent's example of how the process works.
Mr. Lin Sky?
Yes.
I like the wardrobe for the evening. Being one month on the job, I'm very pleased to see no blue.
Thank you. Although my wife thought I was going to work for a manager at McDonald's today.
She'll come around.
Representing the red and gold.
She'll come around.
Yep.
My, the three comments that I kind of prepared for this evening, in all honesty, Mr. Lin Sky, very much follow a little bit of Ms. Lee's conversation. And for those that might be listening tonight that weren't listening last week, the confusion here is in reference to other services that Centero has provided in other districts at other times, specifically that of sexual education, which I would assume is part of Ms. Clark and Ms. Toma's conversation with us earlier. And to be clear again, to reiterate for everyone listening or present, Centero does not provide those services for us.
That is correct.
The organization that provides those services for our students is our staff.
Correct.
Currently, currently it's Relationships Under Construction. What we're doing is looking at, because we have community members with opinions on both sides of that as well, so we're taking a step back to look at how we are delivering that. It doesn't make sense to use our own staff and materials that are aligned to the standards. So we have not made a decision yet, but that's the work that Annie and Kate will be leading.
Thank you. And again, the reason that I bring that up is just to dispel the coupling of these two things. One is Centero and their services, as our board president has so adequately effectively kind of described, even from the parent's standpoint. And the second is kind of what the concerns were, as I did review the materials and listen to the CD and those types of things. The second wondering that I had actually comes from Mr. Plummer's conversation and the doubling of mental health counseling services and that need. When we throw out those types of facts, my curiosity kind of peaks, and I'm wondering, doubling from when to when? Are we talking about this is over the course of the pandemic? Is this over the course of a relationship with a particular company? Is this since you were in your time with our district?
I would say because the pandemic did occur in the middle of the time I was in with the district, during the time with the district and the pandemic, has increased it not only within the district, but across the community.
So then for context, you're really talking about a doubling over a period of two years?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. And then the third question, just again for reiteration, is also what Ms. Lee hit on, and that's, there is no contact with an outside party prior to a parent being contacted and parent consent. And if parents choose to not consent in that moment, there is no contact.
No contact.
Thank you.
Anything else for them?
Yeah. Neither one of you are with Centero?
No, sir.
No.
I'm a, I'm a Big Walnut, I work through the ESC, and I'm a Big Walnut employee.
I'm just wondering why somebody from Centero's not here. The, I don't think the question of the mental health advocacy is the question. I think it's more the ideology of Centero. And did we look at the background of their ideologies prior to letting them in?
I mean, when you say ideology, we met with the mental health board, and again, that's a, we have licensed counselors who've come in and they're not addressing those topics. So I think it's kind of like when you look at counselors who work for any company, any hospital. I mean, there are lots of different branches who are working with their counseling department, again, through the mental health board, so. So no, I'm not-
Did anybody in the district look at?
Again, I don't really know what you mean. So did I look at their sex ed? No, because we weren't hiring them for that.
Well, it's not-
But yes, we did, our former director and lots of our employees have interviewed and met with, and I've scheduled a meeting to kind of touch base with them as we move forward to discuss the complaints, but I have been in contact with them since the complaints were made last week.
This $133,000, is that, am I to expect that that is the dollar amount placed on the valued service that it would take to replace?
Correct.
To replace nine days of counseling service, yeah.
Per week, yeah.
And Guidestone doesn't have the ability to provide the same services?
And I can address your issue when it comes to the atom boards in Ohio and through the Delaware Morrow County Recovery Services Board. They will have a funding source, make a choice, which the provider that they chose for Delaware County and Morrow County is Centero. I'm not sure if it's clear of their process, that is their board that's governed by state statute. And when they declared that, then it was provided to us as a district. And since I've worked here, in the time I've been in the district, that they have provided services starting in two buildings, and because of the pandemic and because of additional funding through that regulated board, we were provided also a third person to be able to, that way we can have services across the district. And they would be the ones who vetted and chose, the provider being Centero. There were not multiple choices, they are the designee, as far as I know.
Correct.
Well, I did a little vetting, I mean, I did some research on them. And I would suggest all board members should. I have severe problems with their ideology. They support Planned Parenthood, for one. They also have some very extreme views on white privilege and racism. If it was placed a vote, my vote would be no. But that's just me.
So I guess as to best of my knowledge, the only customer of Centero on this board, I can tell you in my two experiences, that ideology has never been an issue or discussion in the services provided to my family.
And as a mental health specialist, part of my job is to communicate with the supervisors and with Centero and with Guidestone directly, and very much focus on providing our students equal access, providing our students quality care that is based on research, data-driven, and is focused on helping them be in school, be prepared, and be able to academically achieve. And so when it comes to any of their other programs, that was not something that I have ever discussed with them because the services they are providing for us are very clearly defined in the grant, that those services, there isn't bleed over for their other services because we, it's not part of what we receive.
And you monitor that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I mean, we're talking about licensed mental health professionals.
Yes.
Right. So, and they're not the same people who would be teaching in a sex ed program?
No. Well, I wouldn't know because we don't use it, but I will say that as part of their grant, Centero provides us with master's level licensed individuals. Currently, two, yeah, currently two will be at that master's level. One is at a supervisory level. And there are multiple levels of checks. We meet monthly, bi-weekly. They meet at the site with administrators at the site, our administrators, to make sure that the services they are providing are exactly what we ask for. And if we get any parent feedback, it's immediate. Do we make any changes that are necessary? And I think that's important for quality of service, that they do that as someone working in our district.
Absolutely. Well, the only other comment I have, I've heard from a few community members as well who have used Centero, and I mean, I've only heard positive things. It was a program that was laid out very clearly to them. They felt very informed and very appreciative that it was something offered in our district. You know, thought it was a valuable resource, so.
Anything else?
A question for you, maybe, Ms. Hamburg. The scope of work, as you shared it with us from Centero, the community members who were here last time, were they able to see at least the paragraphs of the purpose and the provider qualifications from that? Or was that something that was just shared with us?
I just got that to you yesterday, so it's something I can send to them. I've not had an opportunity to school starting.
Sure, of course, and it was just a curiosity in terms of seeing what that specific scope of work is.
Very narrow.
Thank you.
I do also have a couple of other comments to kind of clarify Ohio Guidestone, as well as the current mental health services. If an individual in this room with transportation, with insurance, with the financial ability to seek services, no impediments. If you are seeking non-urgent mental health services, most agencies and other entities won't give a date on a waitlist, how long. The approximate time after calling and working with a client this week is between 10 and 12 weeks at a reputable agency that handles high volume of service. The time that we have in district to be able to- The time that we have in district to be able to provide services at parent request usually is within the week that it is made. So one of the benefits with Centero is being able to respond quickly, effectively, and professionally to the needs of our students. The other thing is that the difference between Ohio Guidestone and Centero, why we have two agencies, is because sometimes when you're working with a student and a therapist may not mesh well together. So to be able to give our families an opportunity, we don't single source those services so that they can say, this isn't really working out, can I have another therapist? And we can provide that immediately. There's also a differentiation between prevention services and treatment. So Centero will come in and provide the majority of our prevention services. Ohio Guidestone will come in and provide any services that may have been indicated or may have a longer duration or do not fit the specifics of the grant services. So that way we have an opportunity to help however we can and at the students' need rather than just our appraisal. So the families will say, we would like these services. And part of my job is to help them either transition to long-term services, find other services, or, or to, to change service providers so that we can have the kids in the classroom, whether it's our seniors or pre-K, and have them working the best they can at their optimal level.
I think that's a really important distinction and you just made it, so I'd like to call it out again. So not only is it parent consent with a particular organization, it's also parent consent and choice between two organizations.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Justin or Ross? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next item under this section, Mr. Schneider and I talked about a request from last week. So I wanted to put it as a discussion item, which was a request to have the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence every day at our building. So just kind of open that up. I don't know if you wanted to make a comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll say what I kind of responded to some of the folks that kind of had sent email about that. My own personal belief on those things is that they're good questions and they're ones that we should continue to ponder. But I don't know that I'm in the mode or the desire to personally want to mandate anything like that. What I would really like to see is a conversation amongst our staff and our student council or whatever we want to look at as our student representation, to talk about how they want to best honor our country and how they best want to be able to honor the religious preferences and the religious desires and the religious beliefs of their classmates. And if that required a policy to help facilitate some of those things that would be within statute, I personally would be all for that. But I am really not, I guess I would look at it this way. It's been my notion over history that when we mandate compliance and we force compliance on things, that I'd much rather create an environment where people want to and want to honor our country. And I think there's a lot of ways that happens in our district today. We've been honored multiple times by the Veterans Associations for the things that we do to honor our military and honor our country. You know, we have a strong faith-based community in, in, in our area and around here. And so my own personal belief in that is I'm happy to explore those discussions at any time. I would love to hear what our students think about that. I'd love to see what they come up with in terms of how they want to be able to do that. I think it'd be an excellent exercise and discussion around honoring our country and being able to talk to other people that have different beliefs themselves and the value of having that moment of silence. And again, if it's within statute, what they'd like to do and it requires some sort of board action, I'm happy to explore that personally. But I really do not, I really don't want to mandate anything. I would like people to work together to find something that they want to participate in versus making it an order. And that's just my own personal opinion.
So, Mr. President, I agree with 95% of what you just shared. And I would say that, you know, as a U.S. military veteran, I can get pretty passionate about that topic. In fact, as one of the two military veterans on this board, I can get pretty passionate about the topic. But personal passion aside, I, I think looking at what's currently on the books as board policy in terms of Board Policy 8800 and Board Policy 8820, both of which speak to this topic. Specifically, 8800 Section B, oral recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance may be conducted at a time manner established by the building principal. And 8820 Section A, each school day, a special program may begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Number one, I'm interested by that "may." And I think that if, one thing I heard from the parents and citizens who kind of made a plea to us last time is that the inconsistency of we do it, or I'm not going to say inconsistency, that's not what they said. What was shared was it's done daily at elementary schools. And I think what they were also saying is at the intermediate and middle. And the one place where it's not done consistent, no consistently.
Middle and higher once a week.
Okay, thank you, middle and high. Instead of daily, it, it transitions into this once a week idea. So I certainly agree that, I think it would be an excellent exercise for the consideration of staff and students to partake in a discussion around what to do, when to do, and how to do. I think that by following our board policy, like you just kind of indicated exactly how that might look. And I think that would be really impactful. Because I do believe that our students are respectful of one another and want to take others into consideration in terms of how to do that. I'd love to hear what those principals maybe think around what they're doing with that topic and how they're choosing to address or not address that as a concern and what their staffs say. I think that would be really enlightening for me personally. The other kind of component that I can add in is I once served as the high school principal in this district. And it was in that capacity at one point that I realized in doing observations and such, we didn't even have flags in every classroom, which was astonishing to me. So I checked with Brad Felkey and Chuck Workman, names I know. Actually, names I know many people in this room. I see a smile right now, and I'm not sure if that was for Mr. Felkey or Mr. Workman. But I worked with them and actually got through our Eagles, Fraternal Order of the Eagles. They, they made the donations to ensure, number one, that flags were purchased for every classroom in our high school. And number two, I think one of our former students who built the rock garden and the sitting area around our current flagpole, they made donations for that. So in that spirit, I completely agree with let's allow our administrators to follow what's currently board policy and maybe ask for their input on what those next steps are.
Other thoughts or comments from the board?
I personally really like that idea as well. I think too that that kind of brings in some of the things we talk about with our Eagle profile. And as we progress through education, teaching, you know, problem solving and collaborating and all of that. So I think it would be a fantastic exercise for, you know, the middle school and high school students to go through. And would be happy, like you said, to, if anything needed to be done, to do it. But it may fit within what we already have within our policies.
Can you repeat that? We can't hear you.
I'm just saying that I think that the whole concept of what Mr. Schneider said kind of fits within the Eagle profile of as, as our students are going through their education, that they begin to work on collaboration and working together as a team and problem solving. So I, I agree with the idea that the middle schoolers and high schoolers would go through that exercise as students and, and a school team and kind of decide what, what they want to do.
The term mandated and compliance is what bothers me. If you don't have a period of time in the morning for those that do want to show their patriotic duty to the flag, that, that's the issue. It's, it's not whether you're going to tell them, they have to say the pledge or they have to honor their one-minute silence. It's granting the opportunity every day for that.
And, and I think, and again, I, I think that the, the board policy speaking to that is, is what kind of excites me. After, because I, I didn't have this knowledge. Like as the parent or as the citizens were kind of talking to us, I was a little bit unaware that, oh, I should maybe look at what our policy actually says on this issue.
And if I understand, it says that they're supposed to.
No, sir, I, I don't think that it does. We might have a disagreement there. I think it says "may." And that, that would be where if, if hearing from our principals what that conversation is, that in my mind would be the edit. Is it a "may" or is it a "shall?"
So, so Doug, I mean, engaging our student body and talking about how to do that, any issue or challenge with that? Or are you, is that something you would be encouraged to see?
What timeframe are we talking?
I don't know that we've gotten that far yet. And I guess, Leanne, I mean, I'm hearing four that are in, on board with that. Is that something you're comfortable with?
Yeah, I, I agree that I think it's, I think it's, as Sheri mentioned, I guess following kind of that Eagle profile of being collaborative and students coming up with a solution. And I think oftentimes when we give our kids a chance to sit down and look at something, they may come up with something completely different than we would have. And maybe a better way to, you know, that they feel that they're able to honor their country. And I guess I think we turn it over to administrators at each of those buildings. And, you know, whether they're, you know, employing their student council or their principal leadership team at the high school, something like that. My guess is that there can be some good discussion for those students and kind of come back with a, here's how we think we want to do this.
And I did speak to both of those principals with this being on the agenda, that that may be a, a request. You know, we had some good dialogue around the events that the kids have already chosen to do, including the Veterans Breakfast that they do at the middle school, Service Day, the different drives and projects they do for service families, the Purple Star program that we have that recognizes our military families, the T-shirts that we sell and wear to, to show respect toward them. So certainly the kids have come up with lots of good ways to honor our country. And I think our principals are open to seeing what else they would like to do.
So to Doug's point, for our next meeting, can you kind of just give us a, a framework of what that looks like and timeline? And we can kind of know where you're heading with that?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, Steve, when you were principal at the high school, was it resided every day?
No, sir.
Okay.
Like I said, it took some time for me to realize that we didn't even have a flag in every classroom.
Okay, thank you.
And do you know, Steve, from when you were principal, was, is that typical at a high school as kids get older? That it's not done as frequently as in an elementary?
I, I would hate to speak that in those kind of general terms.
I'm pretty sure that's what I've heard from our high schools in the area. But certainly we can look at if we want to do something different, if our kids want to. Anything else on that? All right. The last item there, just wanted to give some, some time for discussion and/or questions for the start of the year. We just finished day two of our staggered start so far. Had good reports from the buildings of those two days. Again, just talked with some teachers at the high school today who really enjoyed being able to have those small groups of kids and get to know them over the first day. We have all the kids coming back on Monday. So again, just to reiterate, as I know you're all aware, we are requiring the masks on the buses as per federal order, but have not been absent in order from the state requiring them in the buildings. So I just wanted to give that update and opportunity for any questions or comments that you all had for me.
I'm sorry, the school year has started?
I think so.
Kids are coming into school right now?
Yeah, it's been the oddest start to the year in my, my 22 years. But yes, allegedly we've started school.
I bet that's not right. I bet last year was a bit odder.
This is, this is, no, no.
No, really? Okay.
Last year was a little bit.
Well, my congratulations would be to you, Madam Superintendent, for the fact that we've started a school year.
Appreciate our staff. We had a great convocation on Monday. It's nice to see the energy. Appreciated a couple of our board members being able to come and, and serve breakfast and, and speak. So it was a good, good start. Appreciate everybody's work.
Was there a theme that you shared with the staff this year? I seem to remember like patience and grace being the theme last year. What was it this year?
Really about thanking them for all of their work that they have done over the last year and what an impact they've made on our kids. And then just about really trying to continue to focus on our academic vision as we continue to move forward in these crazy times. Making sure that we're keeping kids at the forefront of what we're doing and trying to make decisions about what's best for them.
Thank you.
The bus mandate got extended to January yesterday. Were you aware of that?
I'll be honest with you, Doug, I wasn't.
I know.
It was quite a day.
Just something I caught on the news last night.
So, no, I've not heard that.
Can I ask a quick, well, maybe a couple of questions, but if there's follow-up? Just about your interactions with the Delaware Health District and the frequency of that at this point? How often are you?
We have been primarily meeting weekly throughout the pandemic. We did go to every couple of weeks throughout this last summer, but we're back on weekly. So we have a weekly call with all of the county superintendents and the county district nurses. And basically, it's the, the health commissioner and all of her team work with COVID. So we're able to go through and talk about kind of what we're seeing, how the people are handling situations. And so we stay in, in very close contact. Honestly, there, most weeks I talk to her a lot more than that.
Okay.
Digitally.
Okay. And then one more question. I know in the past, we've always talked about the, the, like trying to focus on statistics for our local, local community. So, you know, we know what's going on in the country and the world and the state in Delaware County. And, and a lot of people can see that because that information is put out there. But they're able to break that information down for you by our district, which has tended to be better and different than other areas.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as, as the kids are coming back into activities in the buildings and people are making their way indoor, they expect those numbers to go up and they have fun of some. But they're also able to give us numbers for students that have been in activities. So all of the districts have had sports and things going on all summer. Our band kids are back. As of yesterday, we did not have any new active cases with our students. Yeah, exactly. I was talking with her with another district in the county and they both were relatively low. So our health commissioner didn't feel like she had any data about actually what's happening at school because what she's been seeing in activities has not been trending upward. But that's something that they're obviously watching. So clearly throughout the, the state, you know, we know that with the variant, that numbers have gone up from where they were in the summer. But we're not seeing anything here that gives concern. So with the other thing that we look at, and I've shared before, is our school nurse looks at all the cases that we have and what the connections are. And so, you know, typically if we would see two cases at a lunch table, are we seeing that? Is that their only connection? Well, no, they had a sleepover this past weekend together. So that, that's the stuff. And last year, we talked every single day about that, like what are, what are we seeing? What are we seeing? Because we did have that situation of exposure at lunch and obviously in our sports. And so we did not, not that there wasn't a case here or there, but we did not see significant spread. And that's a lot of what we talked with the health commissioner about. So that's something that we have monitored as well and will continue to monitor.
Okay. And so I think, you know, the community as a whole, there's different databases and stuff out there where, you know, you can download information and statistics. And I think most of that is fairly historical and you can kind of break it down into smaller groups. But because you're meeting with her on a weekly basis, you are getting more of a real-time statistics of what is going on in our community.
I can tell you, one of the things with the county is they look at how many ICU beds are available. But there are only 80 total beds in the entire region, a bit total. So there just aren't, I mean, a lot. So that's the indicator that put us, if you're following the report card. It's supposed to be 20% capacity is at 19 in the region. So that's the whole Columbus region. They were initially just looking at Grady, which only has eight beds. So that's obviously not a lot of beds when you think about the entire population of Delaware County. So that's one of the things that we talked about. And a question our group asked was, which they're getting us that information, what is, what is typical capacity, what, if you take COVID out of that? What percentage of those 80 beds is typically full? So just trying to get a feel for, you know, and how many cases are there that are actually COVID in those? So that's something her team is working on to let us know. The other thing that I've been asked, and I've been getting back with emails as much as I can. So not, not my typical turnaround time. I try to be within 24 hours, but it's kind of hard right now with the volume. But one of the questions that people But one of the questions that people want to know is at what point will the health commissioner come in and say that people have to wear masks in a classroom or shut down a school? So from her perspective, that is something that she's still able to do if there's, if they're spread. So we've asked her, is there, and they don't have a number for us. They're working on what that metrics would be. So they talked about, you know, they looked at a rate. What does that look like in a really small elementary then versus a really large high school in the county? So they're, they're looking at that, and that's something that they're hoping to give us a little more guidance on. But I know they did say there are multiple factors that would go into that decision. But they're looking, because if they see, again, a number of cases, but a lot of them are connected, that means that's different from, we have cases, but they're coming from households. So she's not wanting necessarily just to look at the case number, but also where those cases coming from. So that's our dialogue that's going to continue over the next couple of weeks as far as. But that would be, that would be her decision as the public health professional. Certainly with, with my two degrees in education, I don't know what that number should be or what that should look like. So that's why we rely on her and meet with her. And just as a reminder, the health department is who decides if somebody's isolated or quarantined. Our nurses assist with that process with doing some of the investigation and conversation with people. But they're the ones who are not authorized to put people in quarantine or isolation.
But because of the frequent contact, we'll be able to quickly pivot if we see any troubling circumstances.
Yeah, I, and unfortunately, I suppose that this comes under the opening of school because again, I think that should be celebrated. In addition to that kind of celebration or conversation, the topic of, I think that what brings us here, and I'm looking, you know, long before I arrived, I can remember numerous superintendents now, so not just you, but people have said, as our schools go, so go our community and vice versa. As I look out in our audience, even this evening, you know, I see by my count, six masks. Now, I'm a shorter one of our board members, so I might be miscounting that. But we have, we have the most packed house that we've had since I've been here, minus the staffing reductions that we had 10-plus years ago. So I think reflective of our community, that idea, have you been around to any of the school buildings? Have you taken kind of an informal poll of what it looks like?
I did check with our principals. We're seeing anywhere from 5% to 15% of people announced.
Okay. And the idea of allowing that to be a parent prerogative right now, I think is, again, consistent with what you put out in the Eagle Examiner in terms of what can be done and can't be done. I certainly appreciated that and certainly supported as well. I suppose I would be like some of the parents maybe that are emailing and asking the question of, okay, so what are the metrics that you're looking for? And I recognize that that's not an answerable question right now as you're kind of collaborating with them on that topic. The wonder I have is, okay, so we're going to be 80% was kind of our peak last year of total students that could be coming into the building based on educational options. What was our, our staffing, what were our staffing levels looking like? Was there ever a day that we couldn't provide services or that staff were so sparse?
The only day was after the vaccine.
The second round of the vaccine.
After the second vaccine, we did have to shut down two buildings due to reactions to the vaccine.
And in that, in those moments, you still were able to flex current staff members who were working to provide services to buildings so that those buildings could remain open. So now I guess that's to Mrs. Dorsa's point of, as you're monitoring those statistics, you're also making decisions based on that. Thank you. The only other, and it's not even a point, the only other thought that I have is around policy 8420, which does actually give you the authority. It's the school closure policy, snow days and so on. Pandemics is actually one listed there. So my wonder is if, if that ever, and again, if, that ever became a situation, my assumption would be we would be then meeting as a board to determine additional protocols as necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I think if something happens that quickly in an emergency, I could shut a building or district short-term like I would with snow, to your point. And then we would meet and talk about a long-term approach.
Right. So thank you. So I just wanted the distinction to be made. It wasn't only at the county level that those types of decisions can be made, that we in fact, you in fact, have that authority by statute and policy already on our books. Thank you.
But still leveraging the county and its data and its resources. Because I, you know, I think for me, all of last year was about, what's the county telling us? They're the most closest to the ground. They have the best feel for our community. I personally felt like it was the most balanced response with, with things in a blend of appropriate concern and practical application. And that's just one person's opinion. And I appreciated everything that they did with our district as well as, as in the community. And so, so just the, maybe just a point of clarification. So with the county health department and recent legislation in the state of Ohio, what is different, I guess, for them this year in terms of impacting us versus what they were doing last year?
Well, last year, the state health director had an order that required masks, obviously. Once that was lifted, there's been legislation that has passed that has made it so that neither at a state level nor at our, at our health district level are those public health officials able to make those mandates, which is what I continue to come back to and look around this group. Neither myself nor any of the board members are, are public health professionals. And so unfortunately, things have been put in that situation where we're getting caught up in, in comments from both sides on that. And, and certainly I can tell you, my two education degrees did not prepare me to make public health policy. And that's why, you know, obviously rely on our health commissioner and on this team for us to be able to, to try to do what we can in a climate where our health professionals are not able to make those calls.
So in lack of the health department's being able to do that, would that require, and I'm not asking you to put on your legislative degree here, but my perception is, is that that would have to be in action by the Ohio Legislature to do anything like that. Is that your perception as well?
For them to make an order, you mean?
Yes.
Correct. With help, now what I understand from our health commissioner, and just to reiterate what I said earlier, so she can't make a blanket mask mandate, but she can if she's seeing spread of a communicable disease. She can come in and shut down a particular classroom, require a particular classroom to wear masks, shut down a particular, at a building level. And in different meetings I've had with other health, because we also meet with some of the other central Ohio health commissioners, that's their understanding as well. So they have some authority to do that at a building level or at a classroom level if they see issues. So they can't just do a blanket policy or mandate, but they can do that if they're seeing spread or concerns there.
So that's not different than last year? They had that capability all last year?
They had that capability last year. Obviously, the difference is at a state level, there was a mask mandate. So the local commissioner did not need to be involved in that. Previously, they might have been able to do something different, but it's very clear now that they cannot make just a blanket mandate.
That's my impression, but I was looking more for general guidance.
And again, I don't have a public health degree or a legal degree, but that's my understanding from them.
But I know you were talking to them and whatnot and have access to some other resources. So I think that's really, for me, it's really important as, as everything changes with this to really understand who, who can do what, whose calls are what, and where are those resources that we're looking? So what I'm hearing you say is we're still looking to the county health department as our primary data source and response source in partnering with them going forward, and that part's not changing.
Correct.
And unlike before, I agree with you 100%, and I think the other component that may be considered in that is, and we can flex based on that data as needed.
Yes, so we can, to your point, policy-wise, make choices without a county order if we would decide to take action as a board.
Or see a need.
Or see the need.
I think the, that relying on past precedent of, hey, there was a need before and our superintendent leadership team took action to, to make sure that everybody was safe. By starting in this, in this way, we still have the opportunity to take action if the data were to support something like that. Thank you.
I see it the same way.
So again, school's open?
School's open.
That's exciting.
That is exciting.
And masks are still optional.
They are. Any other questions, thoughts on that topic?
My only thing is that masks are strongly encouraged for those who are unvaccinated, is what we've shared.
Yes, correct. Anything else? All right, I think that takes us into construction. We have our Director of Facilities, Mr. Doug Schwartz.
Going to turn slightly and try to talk loud because yes, it is hard to hear in the background.
But don't forget the microphone.
Correct, but this will just go out to the, correct. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to go a little off-script first and, and build on the convocation effort that happened on Monday. So welcome back. So for those that don't know, I just want to say thank you to our custodial staff. On July 1st, as Director of Facilities, I became part of their team where they now report to me. So I just want to publicly commend them, the men and women of the custodial department for all they did and all our departments for what they've done. And a quick plug, if you want to be a, a substitute custodian, food service person, bus driver, we need you. All right, still kind of off-script, monthly reports for construction. Again, for the public, every month, Gil Bain, our construction manager, does a, a report here. And it kind of highlights what's happening out there in the field. I know I usually highlight, and I did this time, highlighted a few things, but given the larger capacity and just kind of where we're at in construction, I just wanted to share, we're on schedule and we're going to welcome kids January 3rd. That being said, there's still a lot between now and then to get done. If you go out there, you're going to see pavements finally starting on the front of the building. If we get two dry days, it'll be finished probably in the better part of a week. If you walk the building, and at convocation, I showed some of these pictures, there are parts of the building as scheduled all along that are probably 97% done. So we're waiting for furniture. We might be waiting for the, the smart projector. We don't put that in ideally till the building's 100% secure, since that's a value, and some of that stuff. Mostly the networking, things like that. But there are portions of the building you could walk in as scheduled that are probably 70% done. But I assure you, that is how the building is planned. It's 310,000 square feet. So I, I know there's a report. I know I highlighted a few things. I'll pick on one of the items I highlighted. Furniture is slated to arrive, to show you how we're moving forward. Furniture is slated to arrive on the schedule September 16th. Furniture continues to be installed almost through the end of October. So that alone is a very Herculean effort, but it's staged. It's brought in by manufacturer. It's very messy, very complicated, but we've got a plan to get that in place as well. And so we've got to be ready for it, and some of those rooms are and will be just as scheduled. So I'm going to stop there, even though I highlighted a few things, and see if you have any questions about the project or anything you saw on this report. Okay. So the other two for the public aren't quite as a high-profile, if you will. They're the money reports. So the first report I'm going to go to is actually the single page. I think I put the other one on top, but I'll go to ours last. The single page, which that is, again, Gil Bain's construction contingency. Again, it's our money. It hasn't changed for several months. You'll see at the bottom there, it's still showing 9,401 to the negative. There are several items in their numbering system to the left, 149 through 148, that are still not approved or we have not signed off. But they're, they're items they have to eat, so to speak, so we don't, so we need to sign off because those are negative. We have no money to give them, if you will. But they're tracking them as such, so those are really, that's the R and C M at risk. That's their risk. And so those are dollars or scope they have to eat now outside of the contingency that was awarded through their contract. So essentially, it's just a report of showing how they're, they're in the red, if you will, and they're now assuming that risk again per their contract agreement. And they're undertaking the scope as listed. They're not denying it. They're not delaying it. They're not, not performing it or be behind schedule. They're undertaking the items there that bring them negative. Any questions on their report? Okay. The final report, it's, it's several pages. And again, that is the district's contingency. And I tend to take us to the back page of this roughly three-page document or six pages altogether. And you'll see at the bottom, we're sitting at a delta, I'm sure, $57,022. So we're down to about 2%. For the community, this is money that we've approved or it's really worst-case, things that we may have happened. This is always a worst-case scenario. We have not approved or come to resolution with every one of these items with our constructor manager. And I'll share, I can go through some if you'd like. We review this weekly. So this report was printed yesterday. Today, in my weekly meeting with the construction manager, not saying this will happen every week, we have about $12,000 more to the good. In other words, as we started reviewing, the eight latest items they put on there, the list has grown. It tends to grow every month. We looked at the latest eight, and in going through those, three of them either went away or we felt there was, there was less money they were entitled to as we reviewed their, their fee proposals. So again, it can go the other way for us sometimes, but this is supposed to be tracking worst-case scenario. So it's the, I'll say it's the highest dollar you could say that we would quote-unquote spend. It's typically not, it's, it's not going to be higher than that typically 99% of the time. So I'll stop there. Again, you can see we're doing our best to try and make it go to the end of the project, but we are in August, and we'll keep probably spending money easily into December, which is fairly normal for a project. So I'll stop there and see if there's questions on our financial or contingency report. All right, well, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Schwartz, I actually have a request.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I was, I was sitting back kind of in a passive manner, seeing if anybody else was going to ask something maybe more astute.
You're fine.
It's exciting. I think it's very exciting, thinking our current high school started its service in 1991.
Yes.
As we look at this kind of gold star down here of the target date in the January 3rd, 2022 arrival, some of the things I think as we have started school now and teachers are inhabiting the high school and talking with students and those types of things, the conversation around a, a pullout of what that December is going to look like in terms of, I'm sure from an academic standpoint, tours of kids, looking at classes and where they might be going at different points when they return to school, as well as some of the breakdowns of how you're utilizing those wonderful custodians and maintenance staff for some of this move. And then again, to reiterate for the community, the reason for a mid-year move is not the greatest academic opportunity presented for students, right? It's actually a necessity, given the fact that we're repurposing all of our buildings and need that amount of time from a January move to an August start of next school year. Again, we just started school year yesterday. I get it. We're already talking, but that...
It'll be here before we know it.
It will. And that, that reconstruction or that effort has, we have to have time for that. So I'm thinking a little bit about not only having this gold star as the final kind of penultimate, because it really isn't. It's the next step in what's required for the phase. So if there could be a breakout, even if it's of December and what that might look like, or if it's beyond. I know this report has served a great purpose to the board since the inception of the project and the running of lines in asphalt and inches of asphalt and inches of, I mean, it's been thrilling. But I think that having a conversation about that not really being the ultimate, we're done at this point. There's, there's still other phases to go.
That's fine. In fact, it's a three-panel motif, if you will. And you can see the middle one says elementary and central energy plant. I think I even said last month, which is the point, we really need, you can see there's not much information there. There's not much to report, if anything. Essentially, the elementary is of course done. We're doing final, what's called 11-month or one-year warranty work. There's not much there. There's a little bit of groundwork, but that was really under a separate contract, even though it's around the elementary and the high school. So that would be a great spot to do what you're saying, to the point in terms of what's happening at the high school. We've been, last school year, in fact, I need to point out, we're about to do this now with the middle school and Big Walnut Intermediate. So to remind the public, what Mr. Fuji was just talking about was, once this high school opens, yes, I wish I could go on vacation, but I probably don't get to as much as I'd like because we immediately start refreshing the current high school, doing minor repairs. Those that have been around here a while, 1991 carpet, as he alluded to, other finishes. So we're doing a light refresh. We don't have money to redo everything, but we're basically going to kind of cleanse the building, refresh the finishes, and move the middle school in. Current middle school becomes another master plan, the intermediate. The intermediate becomes empty, and then immediately, and all that happens by the fall or August of '22. And then shortly thereafter, we have to start moving if, if the board and everybody feels necessary. The plan shows I would be tasked with converting the intermediate into an elementary. So yes, there are many more gold stars to come. And in terms of the move, I've been working with Principal Jadoss and his staff. We started almost the beginning of last school year, and now we've got to start doing the same thing actually with the intermediate middle school. And last year, they spent their time, what I call purging, basically cleaning house. You've been there 30 years. I moved out of a house after 15 years. Took me about six months to clean out, have that garage sale, get ready. Schools are no different, and so they're going through that exercise. But believe it or not, if you have, if you have staff or friends at the... it or not, if you have staff or friends at the intermediate or middle school, they're about to start that process in anticipation, then 1st of January, February, they'll get boxes, and they'll start slowly packing, as just as the high school staff's doing now in the fall, they're already packing to get ready, so to speak. So yes, there's a lot of efforts, we're talking about fleshing out December, how are teachers trained, how are they given access, how are they given keys? We've had a couple preliminary meetings, and are fleshing that over the next couple weeks, I hope, so we get to the point we can communicate it to everybody of where we think we're going to go.
And those things just kind of become highlighted as we're actually in this stretch right now in my mind, because students would be, and teachers for that matter, would be finishing their exam for their semester in one building, reporting to another, and kind of resuming their schedule as if, hey, we just moved and you know where to go. So I'm kind of thinking that way.
That's the intention, correct.
And then Doug, the last question, I'm sorry, Mr. Schwartz, the last question I have for you is relative to the same question I've asked you every month that we've been on, I've been on the board, which is, we're on target for our time.
Yes, that's why I started with that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Doug, real quick, just Bee Wee Roof, can you just give a quick recap?
Okay, sure. So there are other projects the district undertakes through what's called permanent improvement funds. Those were also passed in November of 2017, that's a continuous permanent improvement that raises a little over $1 million a year. We're constantly looking at our legacy buildings. So just like your, my house is now 13 years old, my current one, I've already had to replace the air conditioner, the furnace, et cetera, et cetera. Our buildings are no different. Even the 10-year-old middle school and GRE are going to have to start getting a little more kind of living care than you would think. They're new, but they're no longer brand-new. So Bee Wee is an example, the roof was to the point it was starting to fade or fail. Same with three of the rooftop units, which were air conditioning units. Those that don't know what a rooftop unit, I always say, walk out and look at the top of McDonald's and Wendy's, those are rooftop units. So we have those in some of our schools, we even have them on the new high school, they're much bigger and a little fancier, but we have the same thing in parts of our new high school. So we replaced two of those at Bee Wee, they've been operational for about two weeks, and we replaced a portion of the roof, those that know the building, kind of the Eagles' Nest corner. And we'll actually have to come back next summer and do the greater part of the roof and another rooftop unit, because that $1 million also has to buy buses, Chromebooks, all kinds of things. So we're constantly balancing that $1 million against various needs of the district to deliver education and keep our kids safe and warm. Yes, sir. Is that it?
I was just curious.
I appreciate your curiosity.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Unless you have anything else for me, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. The long-awaited treasurer's report.
The exciting stuff now, right?
Make it happen.
Actually, the, as is the case in basically every July, we are just at the start of our fiscal year, not a whole lot to report. Just share two things, you may recall last year, that our property taxes, which is our largest source of revenue, it was quite late. It was, final settlement was not until November, I believe it was, last year. Happy to report that we have gotten our second half of this calendar year's collections. The Delaware County Treasurer and Auditor's Office have been able to correct what they were having issues with in the fall, and we did get settlement in July, so happy to report that. And then, one other piece, also on the revenue side, is we got our first quarterly payment of our income tax. And just sharing that that came in quite a bit higher than we would anticipate in a normal July. So that'll be something that I'll be digging into a little bit more and seeing if we can pinpoint why that is, whether it's, again, that 30-day delay that occurred for filing and payment, or are there other things at stake? Just thought I would mention, kind of those two things are really the only things that are a little bit different than what we experienced last year.
Anything for Jeremy?
Yes, sir. Really, I don't have something to say on every one of these, I just have a question. Jeremy, one of the actions that we took as a board was a transfer to food service of 278,000.
Yes.
I see, it looks to me like that went back, and I just want to clarify, the 278,000 at the end of last fiscal year, do we need to do something in terms of redispersing that back into the general fund?
No, no. The way that those advances work is it comes back to where it was advanced from, so it just comes back to the general fund. And you'll notice that on the, kind of the summary page, the, I'll call it the cash basis financial port that's part of our financial, you'll see an advance in our revenue side of 278,000. So that is the return back to the general fund of those funds that we gave to the food service fund at the end of last school year. Great question.
Yeah, and the only other observation that I had, and it's, this is pursuant to the earlier conversation, is that Guidestone right now, through the beginning of the fiscal year, has been paid $9,025, where Centero has been paid zero. Thank you.
Anything else for Jeremy? All right, thank you, sir. That brings us to item 91, with selected board policy. It's recommended the board adopt the following policy changes, all second readings. 1422, non-discrimination, equal opportunity employment opportunity. 1623, Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. 1662, anti-harassment. 2260, nondiscrimination and access to equal education opportunity. 2266, nondiscrimination basis of sex in education programs or activities. 3122, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity employment. Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, which is 3123. 3362, anti-harassment. 4122, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity. 4123, Section 504 ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment. 4362, anti-harassment. And 5517, anti-harassment. Please, somebody give me a first after reading all of that.
So moved.
Thank you, you can have a second.
I'll second.
Mark, would you like to speak to these?
I would have walked slower up to here if I had seen all of them. A lot of policies, really it boils down to three, because they're all aligned to each other. So there are three policies, the nondiscrimination, the Section 504 ADA, and then the anti-harassment. So you had these readings, the first reading last month, so this is just coming to you for approval at this point. I won't go through every single one of those policies. A lot of those are in relation to the 2266, which, if you recall, a year, year and a half ago, when I, when that federal law went into effect immediately, there was a lot of scrambling with attorneys and reviewing and trying to figure out what did that all mean? The policy 2266 was new at the time, and I said to you at that point, there would be ramifications for what that would mean for alignment for the other policies. So here we are with that, so what you will see is a lot of the alignment pieces, a lot of the language to connect everything together at this point. Any questions?
I had several questions from Mr. Cooper before this meeting, and I hadn't made a lot of those inquiries prior to now in July. The one thing that I would say, Mr. Cooper, is thank you very much for your depth of knowledge and sharing with me the responses that I had, or I'm sorry, the questions that I had. And it's clear to me that significant training has occurred. Tell me, please, passage or, with passage of this or not, the trainings have already started, can you, because several of these talk to that? Can you walk me through what that process looks like for our staff?
Absolutely. And again, a lot of alignment of language, the actual substance to each of these policies doesn't really change the process. Required trainings, anyone related to the Title IX and the anti-harassment compliance officers, those are all mandated trainings that must happen to be trained and to provide the right steps with each of those. Also with our staff, the awareness of if there is an anti-harassment claim or harassment claim, that staff are trained annually through our Public School Works, which is our system for ensuring that all staff are recognizing that there are policies and making sure that they are acknowledging, that they are aware of the policies.
So when you refer to all staff, you mean not just educator staff, you also mean classified All certified, all certified staff members in the district. And in this space, the other question, just so the board is aware, that I brought to Mr. Cooper, was the conversation in some of the options that was there, because some of the language didn't necessarily seem congruent until he provided that most recent update, specifically of which, because if you make the choice in one, because they're aligned, you wind up making the choice in all of the others.
Correct.
So that specific one was in the policy language around, sorry, I tapped it. Decision of the superintendent is final, and then there was the stricken paragraph that the next statement is, in an attempt to resolve the complaint, the person can meet with the board. That is now also stricken.
Right, that is all within that same option there.
Thank you, right, so that's why I was confused.
The second paragraph should have been stricken out because the first paragraph was stricken out, because you chose, because it was chosen and suggested to choose that first option there.
So my wonder in that space, and this occurred to me after you and I spoke yesterday at length, is we have board policy stating that anyone can request to speak with the board.
Right.
So does this policy negate one, or are they?
It does not. What those other policies refer to is there's always a request, there can be a request to meet with the board, the board can determine if that's in public session or an executive session, if it qualifies for an executive session request. But as far as the process for determination and the decisions that are made through this specific policy, someone can request to speak with you about it, but it puts, it takes the board out of that appeal process, which is the recommendation of the legal not to complicate processes and continue to prolong processes, to keep policies straightforward and simplified.
And I certainly understand, thank you.
Sure.
I suppose the purpose of the question, again, it came to me after you and I spoke, is that this wouldn't take out of the board's purview the opportunity to meet with someone who had a grievance among anything.
Sure.
By adopting a particular viewpoint or option, as you say, wouldn't prohibit somebody from being able to speak to us in terms of the whole board?
Could still speak to the board, it would, the decision from this actual, in this case harassment situation, the full investigation occurs, a decision occurs, decision-maker makes that decision, it can be appealed to the superintendent, is the option selected here. It cannot be appealed to the board. So you'd appeal to the superintendent or you'd appeal to the board, is the way that those options are listed. And so the decision of the superintendent is final, in that case, if the appeal occurs, can the person speak to the board? The requests can be made to the board, they intend to speak with them. The board doesn't then have, you know, you wouldn't create an appeal process, again, because we're saying, this decision is final, we will hear the concern that you would like to share, but it doesn't change that decision at that point, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sure, and there are steps or courses of action that could occur from that point forward, I get it. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that one didn't, one policy didn't necessarily void another.
Right.
That was my one wonder. And again, I appreciated the depth to which you could speak to these policies very clearly with me, that was helpful. And just for the purpose of the board, I also inquired about kind of frequency, like how often do these things come into play where a decision has to be made? And it's my understa, and actually, I won't try and summarize our conversation, would you share kind of the frequency and what's transpired over your period of time, six years going on to seven in this role?
Absolutely. And in our case, again, extremely fortunate in this situation, we're a growing district, and so with growth comes challenges and opportunities, but more issues as well. And so I would say, on average, typically, we handle things under these policies a couple times a year at most. We have not had anything that has warranted a formal investigation of the matter.
So nothing rendering the complaint process in a formal capacity?
Correct.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Anyone else, anything for Mark?
I just have one.
Sure.
When you receive these policies from Neola, have they already redlined those sections, or is that something that you do?
We go through the options, and so as far as depending on the draft notes, for example, those end up getting redlined automatically, because those are just notes for why suggested language is in place. From there, as far as options go, sometimes we already have a policy in place, and so going through, they give the suggestions for the whole historical piece of that policy. And so you may see an option, but we've had that option already selected for years in the district. And so that's an automatic, hey, we already do this, so we're selecting this option because that's what's already done. Then they look at, okay, here are the changes of other language that you need to, either are required to do, you're required to strike, you're required to add, based off of what the law changes have been, or they give you additional options based off of the law, the changes in the law.
And I had asked you before, and you had answered, that Neola's lawyers had looked at this, but ours haven't. Is that still the same?
That is correct, as far as the way that Neola policy works. If there's a question, if we are concerned about something on how we operate, and then they're telling us we have to do something different through required language from the law, then we will reach out to our attorneys if we feel it's a concern.
There's no other questions for Mark. Jeremy, would you mind calling the roll?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
No.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Brings us to item 10, Board Members' Items of Interest. And Sherry will let you lead off this evening.
Just want to say a big thank you to everyone involved in it. This school year kicked off. Does seem a little crazy that it started, my two, or my three, my three, don't start until tomorrow. So they're excited, I know, but I know it takes, it takes a ton of work, so thank you to everyone involved in that. And then, again, just to reiterate Leanna's point made earlier, again, you know, this is, you know, an interesting time. We do strongly encourage anyone who's not vaccinated to wear masks. You know, this is a community where we all really care about each other and work hard to, you know, do what's right for each other, I think. Anytime that, you know, there's been somebody in this community who's experienced any kind of tragedy, you know, a fire, you know, health concern, car accident, anything like that, you know, tons of people have come to assist, and I think we need to all just keep kind of working in that spirit of doing what we can to keep each other safe. And, you know, I think, too, the other thing that we need to do is just make sure that we're in close contact with the Delaware County Health Commissioner, and if we're seeing anything that's concerning, we make decisions at that time if we need to make changes, so.
Thank you. Doug, anything for you tonight?
Well, I'm glad we have quite the participation here. We should see that all the time. My only concern is, on that participation, is, and you touched on it at the meeting I wasn't here for last week, people should get the facts, and whatever they come up with as far as their decision, that's their decision. This is America. The civility, or lack thereof, that I've seen on some of the text messaging that I'm receiving, is not conducive of a community that cares. It's more in line with, this is my side and this is my side, and everybody wants to argue over who's right. I received one this afternoon that's got me fairly upset, because it pointed to the parents that were here last week, and called them wackos. And that is not civility. We can all have, Brad, you and I have had different opinions.
Yeah.
But we haven't had a knock-down, drag-out fight, and I don't believe you ever called me a bad name. So that's all I've got to say, is people need to keep the civility up and let's act like adults instead of children out on the playground.
Can I just ask a clarification point on that particular comment? That was not from anyone on the board?
No, 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 no.
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that was
Nobody's called me a wacko yet.
I, I mean, other than me calling you a wacko, but
Well, I don't think you have.
No, no, cool, I just wanted to make sure that that was, because as a board president, I want to make sure we're trying to keep that level up, too, and I think we do a pretty good job of that, typically. Minus a couple of the examples you've given of us, too, but
Well, like I said, we can disagree.
Yeah.
And still be civil.
Absolutely.
Even though you push it every now and then.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's okay.
It was just me.
The comedy show continues.
Thank you, I'll be here, I'll be here, I'll be here four more hours.
Steve, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, much of this has been said, but I have the floor, so I'm going to say it again. The opening of school in excitement, I certainly recognize that there ain't no tired like the first day or the first week of school tired, so would certainly offer my appreciation to the staff of this district, my own student, my own child. My own kid came home like, oh my gosh dad, I'm exhausted, and all that made me think as well, think about how your teachers feel. So certainly want to encourage them as the weekend comes up to take care of themselves, recognize that we also have another community forum coming up in terms of a football game, a home football game Friday night, I think is exciting. I know all of our athletics have now been home, soccer, volleyball have been taking part, and you were just at a football scrimmage earlier tonight, so that's exciting to me, because it's no small task that we've opened our school doors. So thanks for the work that this moment has taken. To that point, Mr. Crowe, I appreciate much of the conversation around sensitive topics, topics that have turned other communities on their head. I think we all received an email about viewing the last board meeting as the Twilight Zone or something. I'm actually appreciative for the citizens that came out and spoke and let us know about consistencies or observations or perceptions, I want to say thanks for that. Because I think the other side of that coin is, we've always demonstrated a willingness to make challenging decisions. It wasn't that long ago that we made the decision to have an in-person graduation that was, you know, social media kind of land blasted in different ways, calling us the source of a super-spreader event, and coming from a place of fear when we were able to do that in honor of the class of 2020. Continued with the class of 2021. My only point in this is that our superintendent in this board has demonstrated in the past a willingness to make challenging decisions, even that might go against the grain, based on data, based on what we believe is the right thing for students. I fully believe that that same spirit will continue into the future, regardless of which direction outside influences drive us. So I'd ask for recognition that when data appears, or when students have issues, that we will, in fact, take appropriate actions at that time. The other thing that I would celebrate, in addition to the opening of school, is the fact that we were in session every day gone day last year. There'll come a time we'll all stop kind of celebrating that, but I was reminded of that when I received my students, my child's state test scores. I recognize that we don't acknowledge state test scores as the penultimate, they are just kind of a snapshot in time or a picture, but I was extremely impressed in the scores that my child received. This is not a proud dad moment, I'm not bragging about him, I'm simply saying that given the fact that we were in session every day last year provided my student the opportunity to demonstrate what he knew and could do. And for that, I will be eternally grateful to this district for making the challenging decision in spite of what others might have said in the moment to move forward with having school. So, thank you for that. Again, I will stop talking about it, but because I received a tangible artifact in the mail, I thought it was important to bring up and to express.
Is that it?
You haven't made a joke yet, so I'm assuming I'm supposed to continue.
Go ahead, Leanna.
I just wanted to thank the staff for a great convocation on Monday, seems longer ago than that. It was, it was nice to see everybody, appreciated the chance to serve breakfast, and just to those who prepared the breakfast, but then also got to enjoy, thanks to them for providing that opportunity for our staff. And then I had coffee with our student council representative Savannah Smith, who will join us next month, met with her yesterday, she's somewhat excited to join us, and-
I hope she doesn't have a bedtime.
So, yeah, I told her that she needs to have all of her work done before she comes on Thursday nights, just in case. And the other thing, in the most recent Eagle Examiner, and I know we had discussed it at the last board meeting, but I was glad to see that we are offering a vaccine clinic on, I believe it's September 15th, at both our middle school and our high school, and making those opportunities available for our students for not just a COVID vaccine, but any other vaccines that they might need, and especially for those parents who may have barriers of transportation, or that they've got to work, and it's hard to get kids to a doctor's appointment during those hours that a doctor's office is open. I appreciate that our district offers those kind of opportunities for our students. I know throughout the year, we see every now and then that we offer some dental clinics and things like that, and I think that focuses on that whole child, and making sure that kids are coming ready to school, healthy and ready to learn, and all those things. So, I appreciate all the work that's gone into planning that. And then I think my last thing, I guess the only other thing, is I will continue to say that we remained in school all last year, and I am very thankful for that. It is our son's senior year, and I am hopeful. However, I will continue to encourage everyone to take care of your neighbor, and strongly encourage those who are unvaccinated to wear a mask, so we can keep our kids in school, because I think that that is what we all want, and that's my goal for this year, is to keep them here and keep them learning, and whatever we need to do as a community to make that happen.
Thank you. I was able to attend convocation as well, and I was kind of joking with them that normally I like, yeah, I know, it's true. They usually have all kinds of things to say, and I was really struggling that day, but the thing that kind of hit me in there was just the power that they have every day in a chaotic world around us to provide love, support, and care for our students in every way, and just reminding them of that power. And I guess I'd like to continue that message this evening to our community. There are a multitude of things that are pulling us in multiple different directions and trying to pull each other away from one another, and so, in the spirit of Mr. Crowe and Mr. Fuji, I guess I'm in the same boat, where I'm really hoping those of you here tonight, as well as those of us streaming along, or those that may check this later, that whatever those differences are, that we continue to treat folks with respect, we address them with a level of dignity, that we're appreciative of those different perspectives on whatever the issue of the day is, and goodness knows, there's plenty of them. But I always felt like in my time on the board, that when I've listened and maybe put down my particular point of view for a minute and just heard other folks, I got more intelligent, I made better decisions, and even if I didn't end up ultimately agreeing with those folks, I respected where they came from, and I respected the perspective that they brought to things, and that what I find most of the time is, outcome-wise, we probably want the same things, we just see different paths to get there. And so, I would encourage you all to just keep that in mind as we're going through with things, and whether it's masks or whatever else that pops up, let's just keep, continue to try to have that kind of mindset and that focus within our community to be open, direct, and have frank discussion, but do it in a way that's respectful of all of us, and I think that's probably the greatest gift our community can give to our kids, is to model that, because there aren't a heck of a lot of places to find that every day today, from at least my perspective, so. All right. Item 11, Public Participation. This is a meeting of Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public community meeting. This is a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda, please reference criteria for public participation, which is attached to the agenda. And Jeremy, how many folks do we have requesting to speak this evening?
So we do have 12.
We have 12, okay, so you are, you are testing the limits, so, here's how this works, is, we give everybody three minutes. We do not, it's not like the Oscars, we start playing music, but what you're going to see, and I appreciate Mr. Crowe for the recommendation, with about 30 seconds, I'm going to give you a little bit of a wave, just to let you know you're coming close, and around 30, three minutes, I'm going to do the same thing again, with the hope that if you're still going that, you can kind of pull it together and wrap it up. Usually when I'm doing the timing on these things, it's not three minutes on the nose, so if you're in that neighborhood and you can wrap it up kind of close within there, that would be much appreciated. Our policy requires basically, or excuse me, it limits us to 30 minutes of public participation, and so if we do the math, even as an English major, if everybody used their three minutes, we may run into that limit tonight. We do have the opportunity as a group to vote to continue to do that, and so you may hear us at some point say we hit the 30-minute time limit. Everybody relax, doesn't mean it's not going to happen, we're going to have talk amongst ourselves to agree to extend. I don't know that there's going to be a lot of argument to do that, but I'm supposing, so I just wanted to let you know that's kind of how it's going to flow this evening, if that makes sense. So, with that, Jeremy, do you want to call up our first person?
Sure, and with the number that we had, I numbered them, and I thought, so topics, I'll apologize that sometimes topics may be a little bit mixed up, but I thought probably the most equitable way to do it, and was just go in order that I received them.
Okay.
So we'll start with Emily Ross, 13191 Olive Green Road, and she would like to speak on Sentero.
First I want to say hello to you as the board, I knew you were going to miss having a Ross at your meeting, so, since my boy's at Ohio State now, you got me. But I'm coming to speak tonight both as a Big Walnut parent and as a school administrator in Mount Gilead Schools up in Morrow County. Last October, we had a very similar situation. A parent came to the board meeting and in public participation, brought up a video they'd seen about Sentero and their sex ed program, and got the board fairly upset and riled up about what were we exposing our children to. As a staff member, our interim superintendent tasked me with fact-finding and figuring out exactly what our relationship to Sentero was, because he had no idea. So, like you, I got to testify to my board at the following meeting, as you did with Mr. Lippincott and Mr. Plummer, and I have to say that what I found was exactly what they told you. We both belong in Morrow County and all the schools here in Delaware County to that Delaware Morrow Mental Health and Recovery Services Board, that provide the prevention services for all the schools in both counties. So, one thing that I want to reaffirm, that I got directly from our prevention board, is that Sentero has not and will not provide that sex education program, Healthy Bodies, Healthy Futures, in any Morrow or Delaware County school. It is only in several Franklin County schools with their ADMH board. As you know, Big Walnut does not pay any money for our Sentero mental health services, they use licensed board-certified counselors to help with things like anxiety, depression, and helping students build interpersonal skills, learning how to make friends, learning what's appropriate self-regulation in a school, so you can learn. As was mentioned earlier, to have the district replace those in-house would be prohibitive. And all of the eight school districts use Sentero in their schools and have for many years. I believe Big Walnut has used it for seven years. So after I shared that with our board in Mount Gilead, they decided that the positives of using Sentero with our students far outweighed the negatives, and they were kind of disturbed at the allegations that were made. So, as we know, the COVID crisis has really taken a toll on the mental health of our students. I don't know if you guys realize what a luxury it was for our kids to be in school five days a week, all year long. That was a rarity in central Ohio, that was a rarity in the nation. In Mount Gilead, we bounced between in-person, remote, hybrid, we didn't go fully back in person till February. And not only did this affect the academic learning of our children, but this summer, we sadly lost a student to suicide. A beautiful young lady with great grades, very talented on the basketball court, is gone much too soon, for reasons unknown. We're left reeling, wondering what we could have done to prevent this tragedy, but thankful that we still have resources to support our students who are struggling. I know some people question the need for schools to provide mental health support, but I do not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Jeremy? Jeremy, I'll have the next, please.
We have Lad Dilgird on viruses and masks.
And Mike Carroll's going to do the second half. I'm Lad Dilgird, parent of sophomore twins at Big Walnut. We're all trying to navigate this pandemic, but we're getting conflicting information from people in power, and the impact to our kids has been harmful, to say the least. Let's start with the data. A report from the American Association of Pediatrics stated children were 0.00% to 0.25% of all COVID-19 deaths. Seven states have reported zero child deaths. If we dig into those numbers a little deeper, the overwhelming majority of cases were young people with severe underlying health issues. Yet we're told to panic, scare our children, mask them, vax them, keep them home, quarantine them if they were with someone who tested positive, and so on. This is madness. Because of dishonest government data reporting, senior citizens and people with severe health issues are lumped in with children who have nearly zero risk in our approach to COVID-19. Last year, there were over 40,000 deaths of people under 18, roughly 256 were COVID-19 deaths. Almost all of those, to the best of our ability to discern, had severe underlying conditions. Your child, frankly, is more likely to die from drowning, flu, pneumonia, car accidents, or suicide than COVID-19. Now, we just received some quarantine guidelines. The high school football team in Lebanon, Ohio forfeited their game this week because some players were exposed to kids who tested positive for COVID-19. The players weren't sick, the kids weren't sick, the players hadn't tested positive, yet they have to stay home. That is madness. Those players are in greater danger driving their cars to practice than they are this virus. Let's talk about masks. Last year, we forced our kids to wear masks all year, eight hours per day to keep them safe. Masks are designed to keep medical personnel from inadvertently infecting patients' wounds, not to prevent the spread of viruses. There's not a single study proving masks keep children or anyone else safe in a public setting, not one. But there are many studies proving masks are harmful to children's health, education, spirit, and welfare. The AAP report shows case rates didn't correlate with mask mandates. States with forceful mandates were no better off than states that had very few rules. Recently, a Florida parents' group sent children's masks to a lab and found they carried dozens of serious germs, including Legionnaires' disease, strep throat, and others. In early 2020, Surgeon General Jerome Adams said masks are not effective in preventing the general public from catching coronavirus. Two days later, Adams said folks who don't know how to wear them properly, like kids, tend to touch their faces a lot and can actually increase the spread of coronavirus. Forcing a worthless but harmful mask on children is being done to make adults feel safer, so that germy little kids don't bring home the virus to mommy and daddy. Most people know kids aren't at risk, but are worried about themselves and sacrifice their kids' well-being out of that fear.
And I think as mentioned, Mr. Mike Carroll is next to-
So those are two separate requests?
They are two separate requests.
Just wanted to make sure, because, just wanted to make sure I'm giving everybody their due.
I'm about to finish. Our government focuses on children because they're an easy target. Kids aren't unionized, don't vote, and must do what they're told or get in trouble. Officials do this to show that they're doing something and keep a good stronghold on emergency powers. What shall we do when a virus mutates and outsmarts the government and spreads, despite vaccines? Well, masks the kids. January 2021 was our highest month ever for cases in Ohio, and according to Ohio BCI, over 92% of the population wore masks in public. Of course, schoolchildren were wearing masks nearly 100% of the time. Masks didn't stop the spread then, and it isn't going to now. Last year, school districts and parents kept many kids home from school, put germ-carrying masks on them, told them what dirty little germ-spreading disease carriers they were. We told them they were killing grandma when they didn't mask up. Is it any wonder depression, suicide, as we heard, and drug use skyrocketed in youth last year? This is the first time we thought government could control a virus with lockdowns and forcing masks on five-year-olds. This is the first time people, including U.S. senators, have openly expressed distrust of the CDC and state health departments. In 2009 and 10, H1N1 influenza killed 14,000 Americans and infected 60 million. That actually did target young people by a wide margin. We didn't close schools, institute mask mandates or quarantines, our kids, keep kids out of sports. We didn't track who was sitting by who at lunch, or worry about little Johnny catching the flu, because the CDC and public health officials managed the outbreak using facts and clarity, unlike this pandemic where politics, panic, and fear have been extremely useful for political gain. I and we urge that regardless of any directive from the governor, DGHD, ODH, or CDC, we do what's best in the interest of children and follow the science. Masking children is harmful, abusive, and shouldn't take place under any circumstances. Masks are meant to be worn by professionals and changed throughout the day. I don't know a doctor, nurse, surgeon, or dentist who wears the same- I don't know a doctor, nurse, surgeon, or dentist who wears the same mask all day or for several days like most schoolchildren do. That would just be unhealthy, unsanitary. I would even recommend, if we're going to do it, school district offer disposable masks. Kids should change them regularly. Wearing a mask regularly for eight hours, same one, is not healthy at all. This virus will mutate and continue to spread for years. Viruses mutate, become more transmissible and less deadly, which is what's happening with the Delta variant. Pushing for zero COVID on the backs of little children is about as useless as trying to cure the cold. Thank you, and I wanted to say thank you for opening school all year last year. We do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is Mary Parker, 8925 Cupstone Drive, on Sintero Counseling Services. Okay, that was her?
She told me she was doing migraine.
Okay. Okay. So next will be Lindsay Leslie of, it's like, 7055 Morrissey Loop.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
As alumni of Big Walnut, a current parent of three in this district, there's so much I want to say, but I can't due to the three-minute time limit. Last year, Big Walnut was the gold standard. We showed that we could do this. We could safely go to school in a pandemic. An entire year, it worked. Last year, we saw next to zero in-school transmission, even at the ELC where the kids did not wear masks. I, my daughter, was there and is currently there. I was so excited for this year to be normal. Guess what? It's not. Delta happened, and now younger people and kids are getting sicker and even dying. Does Big Walnut want to have dead kids? I know you're all thinking I'm being dramatic. I might be, but why take the risk? 6,000 kids are already in quarantine in one district in Florida after, like, five days. What kind of education is that? What quality is that? You said in your canned email responses to many parents that you are not medical professionals. So why are you actually not listening to them? You keep saying, and I quote, "We will continue to work with our local health commissioner and her team to monitor cases and make changes if needed." Well, the Delaware County Public Health states, as of yesterday, and I quote, "This week, we are reporting two failed factors on the five critical factor report card. Therefore, we are advising everyone to wear a mask in public indoor settings and crowded areas regardless of vaccination status." Delaware City Schools said they are listening to the same health department, and guess what? They now have a mask mandate. You know the same health department that can't mandate masks because the legislature took away local control? But we can. Big Walnut can. Delaware has, Westerville has, lots of them have. As stated above, looking at how well things have worked at the ELC last year, I would have been perfectly happy with no masks this year if we had been dealing with COVID of 2020. We're not. This is 2021, and Delta is upon us. And based on what I saw at the meet and greets this week, people are not adhering to the 12-and-under, please unvaccinated population, please wear masks. Why do we insist on being on the wrong side of history when last year we were on the right side of history? You said it yourself, you're not medical professionals. Why are you not actually listening to the people who are? I'm not asking you to move mountains. I'm asking you to do the bare minimum and protect our kids while in your care. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Hillary Smith, 919 South Old 3C Road, on mask mandate and criteria.
Hello.
Hello.
So I have a whole speech wrote out, and now I completely changed it all. But from what I'm understanding, Big Walnut is saying they can't legally mandate masks. But if this is true, then why is Delaware City doing it? Why are other places doing it? It can't be just because the legislature took the power away from local officials. Why are we doing a wait-and-see-how-it-goes approach to COVID? Why are we willing to wait for it to get bad? If Delta's true, one kid comes in, infects five others, then they go and infect five more. It spreads so much faster. My mask right now is preventing my germs from going out into the rest of this room. I'm asking that my kids in the intermediate and elementary school buildings be given the same courtesy from all the other people that are in there. Prevent your germs from going out into the room in the middle of a pandemic so that everybody can stay healthy. That is how my understanding of masks worked. When you said Florida sent all their masks to go get tested and found a whole bunch of germs on them, those germs stopped at the mask and didn't go out. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Jessica Santorelli of 7621 Presiden Loop, Presidium Loop, and this is on the Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Silence.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Thank you for having me. This is great. I've only been to a couple meetings, so this is really informative. So as a mother with four children, three in the district currently, kind of all over the place, I just want to say thank you for everything you guys have taken on because the morale in our home is very high. They're excited to be back, playing sports, and not having a mask. I had a daughter come home halfway last year because of the mask, because she just had a breakdown. She couldn't be in school. The mask was a huge hindrance to her learning. So, and I got their test scores back, and with them being in school most of the time, same thing as you, Mr. Fuji, so very thankful. So the two main things that I wanted to kind of just really kind of, I guess, express was last meeting, this speech on the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence, it kind of really resonated with me. I never really took the time to think that, oh, it's not past the elementary level? I didn't really realize that or think to have that discussion. And I just want to say I really support that thought. And I look at this group and this meeting. We are leaders for our children. We are the parents. It is our job to inspire and guide our children. We are to be that leader. You guys start your meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. So why should we be lowering the bar for our children? They should learn how to respect people in diversity. If they don't understand the Pledge of Allegiance or truly believe every word of it, that's okay. They should learn how to respect that diversity and stand up and respect others. So I really feel like I am growing a deeper passion for this view because we are to inspire and guide them and hold the bar high. We are their leaders. We are their role models, so let's be that. Hold on, my nose just closed on me. And then the Moment of Silence, I think that's a great thought. And I think about, I think having some input from the college students, I think that could be great. I think we also, as a middle school level, we have to be careful. That could be very gray. There's a lot out there, there's a lot of diversity. As long as the adults are taking the lead in those decisions and getting rid of those gray areas and really coming together, I think that could be a great thing. The other thing with the Moment of Silence that kind of got my attention is kids' days are, you know, everything is so chaotic. And that moment that we give them could be the only moment in that day that they get. So if we really want to nurture their mind, their mental health, and inspire and guide, give them 60, 90 seconds to start their day. So that's really it. And the other, like, 30-second tidbit I want to say with the whole Sintero, I really appreciate the information that came in today. It really kind of helped shed some light on what we are, our contract is, what we are allowing, what we're not allowing. I really appreciate that. I think the biggest thing as a parent is, Dave Bream said it, and it really resonated with me, is don't let the fox guard the hen house just because he's not hungry right now. And let's just keep that mentality in the future when contracts get reviewed again or things get considered again because there is a lot of damaging things in their sex ed. So I just want to say I appreciate all the clarity that was brought here tonight because that really helped me understand the whole picture. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
So next is Josie Graziosi, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome back. Well, pretty much in my school, well, I went to school Wednesday, and we didn't say the Pledge of Allegiance. And so, and I went to all Big Walnut schools, so in the elementary, we said it every day and to start our morning. And in intermediate, I'm pretty sure we said it every day. In the middle school, we said it once on a Monday each week. And in the high school, I didn't even know, I didn't even, so last year I was a freshman, and I was so caught up with getting used to everything and being in high school that I forgot about it. And pretty much, I didn't realize that we actually had it until three quarters into the, into the school year because kids are saying, like, do you know the lunch menu? Like, the lunch menu? They're like, oh, that's on the BWI news, and that's where the, like, Pledge of Allegiance is. And so I guess it's in third period, and I heard it four times because I had it in our whole year, because I had to ask the teacher to play it. And then she played it, but then, pretty much, after that. Well, all of our flags are in the black of the classroom, and we don't see them every day because we're facing forward and they're behind us. And when they, first time we played it, pretty much, well, it's instrumental, so that might have not helped kids, but half the kids forgot to stand up and put their hand over their heart, and I was one of maybe five kids actually saying it because they knew it. And it just was super hard because I, well, I had to say it louder and help kids get going because, I don't know, it seems like they should know it. Because, I don't know, we're in the greatest nation. It's just annoying. Well, pretty much my teacher could decide if she wanted to play it or not. And, yeah, well, yeah. And I think with the Moment of Silence, I really enjoy that because I'm super busy and I never get a second to breathe. And even if other kids want to do other things, I feel like it really helped me just have a second for myself.
Thank you.
Next is Katie Zapia, 801 Village Mill, and wanted to comment on the last meeting.
Hi, thank you very much. As I watched the stream of the last board meeting on August 12th, I believe it was, I heard someone say, "We are community rooted in faith." And I'm here to politely challenge that, not because I don't believe in faith, I really do. I'm very involved in my music ministry at my church in Westerville. What I'm here to say is we should be a community rooted in community? Community? What I mean by this is, what I mean is this, if a child needs mental health assistance as a community, we should rally around that child and their family. If a child is succeeding amazingly academically, we could, we should celebrate with that child and their family. If a child is struggling academically, as a community, we should rally around that child and that family. We are not all in the same boat. We are weathering the same storm. Some of us are in a yacht, some of us are in a canoe. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter if a child wants to have rainbow hair. It doesn't matter if and where a family goes to church. If a family chooses to root for the Bengals or the Steelers or the Browns, I'm a Lions fan, unfortunately. Those are all personal choices that a person and a family must make. What matters at the end of the day is that what divides us should certainly be less than what unites us as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Renee Bream of 37 Letts Avenue.
Thank you for this opportunity as a follow-up to last week. And I really appreciated all the information given by the mental health, on the mental health side of this. I still have a few questions. I'll email on that, but on behalf of my sister who couldn't be here today, I will say one thing about the flag. I think that sometimes we forget about why this flag is important and why our kids should respect it and why we should know the pledge. I mean, there are many people, ancestors of mine and every one of yours that died for this country. And we have something that no other country has. So I'm not so sure that the flag should be a negotiable topic at the high school or any school. I think if you were to ask kids what they think about the flag, I think, or I think we should ask them all kinds of other questions, like, what do you think about even going to school? Because I think there are kids that'd say, no, I really don't want to. So I don't think that the flag is a debatable subject. It just seems like common sense to me that we should always represent our country, especially since the schools are part of our government. So, but if you want to ask that question to the students, I suggest, given the students' my CD that I offered you, ask them to listen to this. I was planning on reading a few of the quotes from it, from Sintero. But there are kids in this room, and out of respect, I would never read what this Sintero person presented. I would never read it in this setting. And then ask those seniors and say to them, if you had a child in the school system, a first grader, second grader, third grader, I don't care what grade, after you listened to this instructor, would you want your child in front of that counselor? Granted, maybe it's not the same person that did the sex ed, but a company stands for something. And I guarantee, I can't guarantee, but I would assume that after any senior listens to this, they would not want their kid in front. And I'm not saying that I don't, I don't want to help kids, because I do, of course. And every parent here that is here because of concern, I really think that we are all mothers and fathers, we care about these kids. The comments, some of the comments I saw, I really think that we do have more in common. All of us parents want what's best for our children. All I'm saying is, we've got to reconsider this contract. I agree, it's free, that's nice, but we need to let our parents know what Sintero stands for. I would suggest you go back to the health department. It's costing somebody something. It's costing all of us. It's our taxpayers, our tax dollars that pay for mental health. I'd ask them, listen, you know, we don't like your provider. Why don't you give us the money and let us hire our own people? So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. And seven years ago, I found this out, and I'm now kind of a little bit surprised at Sintero. that Centaro's been in our school for seven years. I think that we need transparency. And I, and I'm not saying that you guys aren't doing a good job. It's not the case at all. I think if you look up, if you look into Centaro on the internet, you don't find anything bad. You don't even find anything about their sex education, nothing. You've got to dig, dig deep. Question is, why is this being hidden? Why does Centaro hide their sex education?
Renee, I'm letting you go over four now, so I just need you to wrap up if you could, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next is Karen Ambrose of 5021 Plantation Road on Centaro also.
She and I didn't get together, really.
I don't, I don't think I can grade off for marking and copying, so you're okay.
My husband and I brought four children through the school. I'll get unemotional pretty soon. Now, we have 13 grandchildren in the school district and probably many, many, many great grandchildren. They're the ones I'm concerned for. My grandchildren, I have no problem. They're good, they're wholesome, they're the package. And I am a proud grandma. So, I listened to this. I even transcribed it the best I could and it took me hours. And I'm going to pass it out. And I'm going to invite anybody here that would like to come to my home and listen to it. I don't have to be there with you, I can be in the other room, you can bring your friends. I'm inviting you. My home phone number is 740-965-3517. It's a landline that picks up after two rings because of telemarketers. And I will call you and I will invite you and I'll order you pizza. This is bad stuff. Centaro probably does have some good stuff, but there's always an underlying thing that takes very deep study, emotion, and care. We all have deep emotion for our kids and care, but believe me, there is stuff in this. For me, a lady who's going to be 80 next month, it's pornographic. Probably to you, it wouldn't be because you've been raised in a different society, but it's really, really, really bad, really. So, if you didn't write down my number, you get it. I'm right here in Sunbury. I live on Plantation Road, come to my door. I'm serious. And the Pledge of Allegiance, when I was in school, I graduated in '59, we all said the Pledge of Allegiance with our hand on our heart. I go to football games, I'm about the only one singing the National Anthem. The patriotism of this country, this little tiny community is dull, just dull. My husband was in Germany during the Berlin crisis and we weren't married. But, you know, the patriotism, I'm just so sad that I don't see it in the kids. They're not getting it from school. And I got the wave and that's okay.
That was your first wave, you got some time.
Anybody can call me. I'd rather you come to my house, I don't really like being on the phone, so. That's it. Oh, and one more thing. I would love to come to these meetings. I had my hearing tested three months ago and I do not need hearing aids. I think that we can afford better microphones. When he was speaking, I could hear him, but he did this. I couldn't even hear him through this.
It goes to the internet, it doesn't go to the room.
Why? How many of you had trouble hearing?
Nobody's usually in the room.
Normally, normally here, there's not as many people here.
That's because they can't hear. And you know what, another thing, the school, I loved, I was in the senior class play and junior class play in Loves Park, Illinois. I was in both plays. You know why I got chosen? Because they could hear me. The plays here at the school, I go to the plays and the microphones are horrible. We're spending all this money on whatever, let's get some microphones at work.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So, our, our last individual is Annette McMurray, 3690 Worthington. And her topic is whatever God moves her to say.
Good luck following that one.
So, yeah, when he asked, when I came in, he said, what are you going to talk about? And I said, I don't know, whatever God moves me. So, first of all, for those of you that were here last week, it was probably one of the more energetic events that I've been to. I said at that meeting, I would love to see this room packed. This room's packed. This is the way it should be every meeting. I think Doug said that earlier. Last meeting started out with Brad reading an email that he had received about misinformation. I spent today reading a lot of misinformation that was put out on social media. It hurt my heart. It hurt my heart because for the majority of my life, I've lived in this community. And it's a community that cares about each other. It's a community that stands together. It's a community that respects each other, respects each other's differences. Today, there wasn't a lot of respect. There was a lot of misinformation. Nobody took the time to listen. They only heard what they wanted to hear. I ask you all to take time to listen to each other, be participants. We don't have a lot of control in the world right now, but what we can control is our community and where we live. Take the time to talk to your neighbors. Take the time to understand where they're coming from. Pledge of Allegiance, I got a funny story. I've had some serious talks here tonight. So, my son gets home from his first day at school and I said, did you guys do the Pledge of Allegiance today? And he said, yeah, but my teachers knew, he just got hired on Sunday. I said, oh, really? He said, yeah, and he didn't have a flag in this room. I said, well, what did you pledge allegiance to? He said, the 2000 championship flag for Ottermind's basketball team. Okay, that'll work, that'll work. But he said the pledge. I agree with Renee. I, I think that the respect for our country, the respect for our flag should be something that we as a school district honor and expect of our children. We need to raise the bar, we have to raise the bar. That building in 1991 that's now the, going to be the old high school, I was one of the first classes to go through there. I also was the announcer for our student announcements. Every morning, I got into that office, did my announcements, and we did what? The Pledge of Allegiance. It's a part of who we are as a nation. Let's respect it and bring it back to our schools. Thank you.
That's it.
We got in under 30-ish?
Ish.
Okay, good deal. I appreciate your flexibility. Thank you all for coming out, thank you for your comments. Item 12-1, it's recommended the board approve the 2021-2022 school fees. Could I have a motion, please?
So, I'm gonna...
Thank you, Sherri, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, anything you want to add on the fees?
No, these are pretty much the same as last year. So, we just approve these each year.
All right.
Quick question, though, with regards to the fees, we made a modification, I think, in March of 2020 around preschool?
Correct.
In terms of a refund at that. So, is this the normal price that we set it at previously?
These, these are the normal rates that we had. I believe the, when we kind of did a cost analysis, we did raise the preschool by $20. So, that is one, one change that occurred for this year, I think which the...
In the last year or this year?
It was in 2020, because we were out for COVID, that we did approve the, the fee refunds that you mentioned. But these are the same, basically everything other than that one change that I mentioned for this year are the same as what we had last year.
Flat from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And this may or may not go to that, the fact that we are through the USDA providing free and reduced lunch, or providing free lunches to all students, that families are still eligible and should complete that paperwork if they have a need and to help get some of those fees covered, correct?
That is correct. I think we mentioned that in the Eagle Examiner, so.
There's nothing else for Jeremy?
Okay. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Item 12-2, it's recommended the board approve the Meta Solutions Cooperative Advertising and Receiving Bids for School Bus Chassis and Bodies Resolution. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
This, with growth and with a older fleet, this also has become a annual one. Still continue, when we, we look out there, continue to see a good benefit by going through a cooperative purchasing program for the bidding of our school buses. I will also note, though, that as it says at the bottom of the resolution that was provided, that this is not, this is not us doing any, any of the actual leases. This is just making sure that we're able to participate in that, that program. So, those are, those are other approvals that occur from the board. So, this is just participating in this program.
Anything for Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
On the next one, Mr. Schneider, there is a typo, it should read 21-22.
We don't want to do that retroactively? All right, so I'm going to kind of amend on the fly here. It's recommended the board for 12-3, it's recommended the board approve the bus stops for the 2021-2022 school year and authorize the superintendent to designate and make changes in bus stops as needed. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna, a second?
A second.
Ooh, I think Steve got in under the wire. Is this just the annual, allowing you the authority to make adjustments, which I know we have to do? Right, what?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. And that brings us to item 13 in the Human Resources Report. Welcome back, Mark.
Thank you. Actually, it can be pretty quick tonight. Everything is pretty self-explanatory, nothing out of the norms with resignations as well as approvals for contracts here, certified one-year contract for a teacher that was just recently hired, as well as...
Was that Sunday night?
That was not, this one was not Sunday night. We do have a few supplemental contracts on there as well for you. So, any questions on any of those items? Okay, thank you.
I think we're good, thank you. Item 13-1.
Mr. President, I move consent agenda items 13-1 through 13-5.
There is a motion to consent items 13-1 through 13-5. Is there a second?
Yep.
I have a second for Mr. Crowell. Jeremy, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. Schedule the next board meeting, or next regularly scheduled board meeting, September 9th, 7:30 a.m., right here, and then we'll be back on September 16th at 6:30 p.m., right here as well. Both of those will be streaming on our website. Item 15-1, it's recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employer official and to discuss details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the Board of Education. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes. We're going to go into executive session now. It's not anticipated we're going to take any public action coming out of executive session. So, if you came out to join us tonight, thank you very much, same on the live stream. Have a good night.